And we're gonna give a joke show. If anybody else trained in the lobby. Right, should we call this meeting to order?
Anyone present to speak? Is there anybody in the Zoom meeting that wants to speak? Oh, this is gonna be Bill Billyack?
I think so. He had some trouble last month, I remember, so hopefully he's able to get in.
Alright, I'm guessing Bill Billyack probably doesn't have general discussion. So I said, what do you guys think?
There it is.
Hey, Bill? It's here. So I think we can move on to the director's report. That's you, James.
Alright, so this one might be a little lengthy, but it's good stuff. So first off, the biggest thing, I'm super excited about this. I'm sure you guys probably remember Stephen Davis's bench that's been planned to be put in at River Road. So me and him, me and Steven have been going back and forth for a couple of months. We were trying to decide, would you like it before winter, before the ground gets hard? Do you want to wait until the spring when some of Isaac's friends are back from school so they could have a ceremony? And so while we were kind of going back and forth, a mother of one of Isaac's friends contacted me. And I guess some of the friend group had raised some money through some type of basketball tournament. And they asked if they could donate it to us in sort of a, in Isaac's memory type of thing. And so I was going back and forth with Steven, I was going back and forth with the mother. And I kind of had the idea to create the Isaac Davis Youth Basketball Scholarship for families in town. And so I ran that by Steven, he's all for it, he loves the idea. And we decided to push the bench installation to the spring. We're gonna have a small ceremony unveiling the bench. And then I'm planning to hold a three V three basketball tournament at the park with proceeds going towards the scholarship fund. So I kind of came together a perfect storm type of thing, and I'm super excited about that. Steven's all for it, the mother and the friends are all for it. So in the springtime, it's gonna be a lot of fun, a lot of tournament at the park. And the money, it'll go towards a good cause. We already used some of the money to cover some players who are playing this year in basketball that they had donated. So that's my, that's my exciting news. I'm really excited about that, and it worked out for everybody, so.
Great.
That's the, that's the big update.
You're gonna do the three on three when they dedicate the bench?
Yeah, yeah, so bench dedication right into the tournament. And then we're gonna have, my assistant Chrissy's working on a little write-up with Steven for a section on the website with info about Isaac. And, you know, the scholarship fund and just general information that'll be on the website for people to see, so.
You said it's a youth scholarship for students, not just student athletes?
No, it's for people, kids playing youth basketball, so if the parents can't cover the, the fee for basketball, we will use the scholarship money for that.
That's perfect.
So next item, I created a Wellington Parks and Rec Program Suggestion Google Form. And so basically it allows, I might even be able to pull it up on this. I'll probably mess it up, I won't try that, but basically it's, it's got sections for, you know, you could suggest a program. I put in there, are you willing to volunteer to run the program? And then a section just for general comments, questions, stuff like that. I have it pinned on our Facebook page, and we also have a section on the website about that. And so we, we have one of the suggestions that I'm gonna look into when it gets nicer. I was like cross-country club type thing for the, you know, for anybody, basically. But I guess they got rid of it at the school, and one of the parents reached out to me and see if that'd be something we could run, so that's in the back of my mind. So update on the, we had the turkey scavenger hunt this year. You might have noticed some of the signs up at the park. Good participation, I think about five families did it here, and then another group at Fenton Ruby Park. The raffle prize, I'm gonna pick a raffle, be a family pass to the Hall's Pond. So we're gonna pick a family, I think we lost Bill, pick a family who participated and found all those turkeys. And we'll get a pass to the pond for winning the raffle.
I had the pond in Ruben, so a bunch of turkeys there.
Yeah, yes, it was, it was a good hike, going out there with the, it kind of looked a little strange, walking around with the mallet. But it worked out.
You're gonna have a raffle, and you've already predetermined the winner.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick, I'm gonna do the raffle soon. I haven't predetermined pick for there. I'm gonna.
I'm gonna give it to the kid who found the all thirty, you have a raffle.
I think the plan is I'm gonna assign every family a number and do a random number generator.
Every family that.
Send me the pictures completing the scavenging, they'll be entered into the raffle. Next item, adult basketball started up, probably had twelve to fifteen participants so far. We have some space for a couple more people if they're interested, but really good so far. And I think the prepay is working out just for longevity's sake. And I must say, Mike's a tough guard.
You were, you were there, and you're calling it good?
You played? I thought you were quitting.
No, I took it out because it called it. Alright, I wouldn't call it good. Exercise.
Yes, yeah.
The isolences.
Yeah. Youth basketball update, we finished with approximately seventy signups. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough signups in the girls' third or fourth grade division, or the girls' seventh and eighth grade division. But Mansfield, they're allowing the third, fourth grade players to play on the Mansfield team. So it worked out, the kids got a chance to play. And we only had one sign up in the girls' seventh and eighth grade division, and we're gonna, we're gonna refund the family. And I am also, I am coaching the boys' fifth, sixth grade team. The parents, they weren't able to volunteer to coach, so I wanted the kids to be able to play, so I'm stepping up. It's, it's a lot different, this age group, it's a lot different than what I'm used to, so I've had to tone it down a bit. But I just, I left practice to come here, and it's a good group of kids, so I'm excited about that.
Boys?
Yes, boys, fifth, sixth.
Thanks for doing that, Jim.
Right, I'm excited to get back to coaching.
That's great, wow. I thought Ignatius told me he was coaching in seventh, eighth grade.
He's doing seventh, eighth.
Well, if he says five, six.
Uh, he's doing the school team.
But I talked to him yesterday, and I thought he said there was a seventh, eighth grade girls' team.
Not for rec.
Not for rec.
Yeah, not for rec. So bus trips, I'm meeting with the other towns on December sixth, to plan out next year's trips. For the Tatt, the Pollin, Holden, Coventry. That group of towns that we do the trips with. And I've also been discussing with Human Services and the Senior Center, our own town bus trip to a craft expo in Hartford in February. So we're gonna be gauging the interest on that. And then if we get a good amount of people from Wellington, we're gonna try, but not enough to cover the cost for the bus and the tickets. We're gonna try and branch out to the other towns. But I've been working with Nan, Colleen, and Karen and Human Services, and it's, we're excited about that. It'll be good to give the seniors a chance to go out, go over to Hartford for the, it's a big craft expo at the XL Center, so it's, it sounds fun.
It's not just for seniors.
No, it's gonna be for everybody, but we did talk about how, you know, market it to the seniors at the Senior Center.
Is, is Human Services the same as Youth and Services?
Yes.
Is that the new name for it?
Yeah.
And do we have a director yet?
Karen Cote.
So she, she has succeeded to where Jenny Arby was previous?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, I'll get that name from you later, Jim.
So update on the tree lighting, I think I mentioned previous meeting, December eighth from seven to eight P M. John Teham is gonna be Santa, I've locked in the Girl Scouts for each, the PTA is gonna be involved. I tried to get the library involved, but they have their craft fair the next day, so they have to get ready for that, so they won't be able to make it. And the tree decorating is also coming back, and that's gonna be December fourth at the Old Town Hall. And we've had a brief sign up so far, and I'm waiting for registration paperwork from some other people. So I think it'll be a comparable amount, amount of trees from last year. Yes.
You give out prizes at that?
No, not for the tree decorating, the trees will go to families in need. And then I have a section for River Road, just some things that I'm planning to handle on the downtime. I guess we can call it the downtime in the winter. One of the baseball gates I noticed came off, so I'm gonna try and get the part at Mansfield Supply, see if they can help me out with that. I wanna order some more mulch for the playground, because that's been getting low. I'm gonna take a look in the files, see if, I don't know when the last time it was replaced, but I'm sure there's a.
At River Road?
Yeah.
Oh, you could have any more than that.
So I'll see if maybe Maureen had, has a file with the, who she used, because it's the, if, some acronym that starts with I, that I don't know the name of, but it's Playground Certified.
Special, yeah.
Yeah.
Can't get any sliver from it, whatever.
If, if.
Can you get Public Works to help you?
Yeah, I've talked with Troy about it, and they have a special machine that they, they used the last time.
You know what else you gotta put on your list? Gotta turn off the water at the shed.
Yes.
Just heat tape around it, get plugged that in, or, because of winter thumpers, I think.
Yeah, I've seen this, but.
We could drain at least the tank.
Yeah.
They'll go on the list.
Lights can probably go off too, right, or on the cords?
Yeah, we can turn those on.
Is it just a switch?
I'll do it for you.
Awesome, thank you. And the last thing, I wanna clean out the Little League shed, especially, I'd like to get some games there. This coming Little League season, so, so me and Chris will probably take a, take a day to go clear, clear all that out. Because it's, there's a lot of stuff in there, I don't know if it's ours or the Little League. But we, I wanna make it nice for the coaches who need to go in there with the game to start again.
Who's Chris?
Chris Kelly, my assistant. And then one, I always like to close out with an idea, something I thought of as maybe a suggestion box at River Rose. If we could put it next to the bulletin board, potentially another Eagle Scout project, or just making a, you know, like a, almost like a mailbox where people are walking by and they have an idea, they can put a, put the paper in, I can check it every now and then, but.
Is, is there a way to do it online?
Well, I have the Google form, but the, I've been told by some people that they're not that great with the internet, and they like the, the. So, so I think both the online one and one for hard copies, it's a good equilibrium.
Plus if someone's at the park, can they get an idea in their head?
Yeah.
That'd work.
And I think that is all for me. Unless, nope, I think we're good, so unless anyone asks some questions, I can elaborate on some things. I know I went through that fast.
Can you just tell me the name of the Human Services?
Karen Cote, C O T E.
How many kids signed up for hoops last year?
Oof, I'd have to check the exact.
No big deal. Feels like about the signing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
And then I think we finished with twenty-three in the instructional program, which is good as they, as they move up.
Theater group.
Yeah.
That's good?
You got all the coaches lined up for all that?
Yep, yep.
That's the hard part. You willing to vote here?
No.
Yeah, you're retired.
Exactly.
Exactly, right. Alright, any other comments on the director's report? Jimmy, you still liking your job?
Loving it.
I noticed the, the other day I went by Hall Pond, I think the raft is still laying under each.
Yep, so.
Is that where it's gonna live?
No, no, Troy, they've been backed up a little bit, Troy and I, we've been talking, and they're gonna pick a day where we can go out and get that, and it should be very soon.
Or freeze itself to the ground?
Yes.
Where does that go? Does that go in that container?
Yeah, yeah, either, I don't know if it's next to the container, inside the container, off the check.
Does it come apart, isn't it?
I don't think so.
Oh, it doesn't? We never got that new raft that was made out of.
That's the new one.
I'm surprised anything is still usable like that, when I first go around this.
Isn't this a replacement? We bought a new one.
Yeah, that's the new one.
Like about what, six, five years ago or something?
Not sure, but isn't it pieces, were they like plastic pieces that, I thought they could break it in half, they can't do that? So it has to go in on an angle?
If it goes in at all, yeah.
It shouldn't be very big. Container's pretty big.
Okay.
I don't know how much it weighs, it's hard to maneuver it on the side end or rip the edge or tear it.
Yeah.
Make a hole that fills with water, and the next time you. They used to bring it all the way, where did they used to put it? Be at Department of Public Works?
Yeah.
Alright, no more director's reports, but whole business I see is discussion of River Road.
So Carl, not able to make it tonight, I know he sent us an email.
He did, and I, I think he said.
I can.
He doesn't have to worry about the wetlands, right?
So Carl said, "I cannot make it to tonight's meeting, but am currently working on processing an application to planning and zoning for the lighting. After discussion with Mike D'Amato, we do not have to apply to wetlands, and it appears that the application to P N Z will likely be a staff level permit. We'll keep you posted." That is the update from Carl, it seems like he's made some progress with planning and zoning, so that's easy peasy, you know.
And, but we're not out to bid yet, that happens after all this, you gotta get the permits first. Anything else?
That's all I have from Carl, and I think once Carl finishes up with P N Z, we can go to the next, the next step.
Okay, everything look okay down at River Road?
The, I did notice there were some spots after the rain today, that the drainage, you know, you can see some puddles, but other than that, and the, um, I hate seeing the, the downed wire.
I mean by the railroad tracks.
I, once, once we get somebody in here and we're able to get up on one of the bucket things, we can, we'll be able to get it back up.
I think that was a light project.
Yeah.
Yeah, how's the basketball, is that up and going?
At the park?
Yeah, town, at the, you know, old school for rec basketball.
Yes, so that's, the first games are this Saturday starting, and instructional started, not the past Saturday, two Saturdays ago, and, and I was there for that.
How are the numbers this year?
Seventy total. And I'd have to check, I know it's definitely, it's, it's more than we had two years ago, I don't have exact numbers from last year.
Seventy sounds okay, I think eighty's a good number.
Well, we only fielded a team in every division, but.
With less kids these days. You know?
But you said you've got a bunch of kids in the instructional.
Twenty-three.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, that's excellent.
So that's, the plan is just to keep them in the program as they move up, and we'll be in good shape.
Yeah.
I remember more than that instructional.
I think about, you used to be eight hundred kids in the school system, now there's four hundred.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, you guys should have had more kids. Is Laura willing to have more kids now?
I did more than the average.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not clear if Carl's including the pickleball court on his plans. I'm not clear on that at all, and I hate to lose any momentum we've generated, because it's been very frustrating with the time it's taken to get this far. And I just need to make sure that Carl has the pickleball on there, and that we are also asking the right questions to C I P on what they want to approve it, get that money out of the safe to move forward on that, at some point, whenever that's appropriate. So I don't know if we need other permits for the pickleball, or what we need for that, I don't know.
I think we at least need to have it on the print, I'll, I'll email Carl tomorrow.
Thank you. I got two more River Road things.
Go for it.
The landscaper's dumping grass in the north corner. North is.
You got it.
Yeah, and the soccer field.
It looks lousy. Can we find a place for him to dump the grass? He's just gonna keep piling up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out this week to, to Mr. Roy and get that handled.
Where is he dumping it, in the woods?
No, we're running the edge of the grass.
On the edge, huh?
He's throwing it on top of weeds, and the weeds are growing up through here, it just looks like, it's horrible.
It smells too when you go by there, because it's rotting, yeah, the composting action.
Get in the woods at least.
I don't remember.
How's he gonna get it in the woods?
I don't remember them, I don't mean, in the past, I don't remember them.
Kind of, the grass just go right back into the.
He may have had a couple of cuts, because we had so much rain where there was time in between, it was too thick to leave it laying down, so he probably picked it up.
Doing it two in three from they.
Maybe, rained a lot this summer. But that's a good point, we should make sure that doesn't happen.
So I think I'll. Another place out of the way. Jimmy, don't forget the poop bags.
Yes, yeah.
No poop bags today.
I wonder if he could drop the grass off at the dump?
I don't know if they'll take it.
No? Where would they take it? They don't take grass, I don't think so. They don't take anything like that, they take brush only, not grass, they take grass, but you can't burn it.
It's possible, we, he, it's possible he could make a little path that goes deeper in, so you wouldn't see it, but.
Yeah, just sprinkle it into the woods.
I think work, you know, I, I could go over there and just shovel it back.
They'll make your job.
No, no, it's more work, you start doing that all summer long, you're not gonna have fun.
Ask him if it was just this summer because of the extra rain, and if he wants to continue, then maybe we clear a little spot so we can go deeper in, so he wouldn't see it. Because he's driving in with machines, probably helping the bags and then driving back out.
I don't think so. Or if he's got a dump truck, couldn't he just take it off the site?
Why can't he take it?
I, the, all the guys, there's a few guys that do landscaping in our building, they always come back with dump trucks full of grass. They find places to dump it.
Or you're behind your shot.
Sometimes.
Behind your garage.
It can't stay on the River Road property, I agree.
It's a beautiful place.
That it?
That's all I have for River Road, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Well, our new business is choosing our twenty twenty-four meeting dates, do we just do the same thing?
So I have all the dates last Monday of every month. It works out, the only one that falls on a holiday is in May, Memorial Day, so it would be the twentieth instead of the twenty-seventh.
When you say the, the last Monday or the fourth Monday?
I did, I went by the last, but I can change things up.
The last generally is the fourth.
Well, no.
No, but.
Close enough.
Well, I understand, I just tried to.
We'll wait for this, we'll wait for the agenda to.
If it doesn't, and the only one that lands on a holiday is Memorial Day, and you move that, that's not bad.
Looks like we've missed, nope, that works out.
Well, Christmas is the fourth.
Next year?
This Christmas is Monday.
It's still this year, though, he's talking next year.
Yeah, next, next month's meeting is on the eighteenth, week before Christmas. But I can, I can put together, if we want to do the fourth Monday, I can put together those dates quickly.
I don't think it'll change drastically, are you gonna put together and email it to us all, and we can just agree?
Yeah, looks.
Something, generally, a meeting gets moved here and there anyhow, you know, so it's, it's, I'm sure it's fine.
So I just, I don't know, do I have to print a list out and get it to the town clerk?
We do.
Do it that way, okay.
Because they post it, I think.
So are we good, do we wanna vote next meeting on those, and I can have a.
Just do it right now.
Okay.
Let's see, twenty-two.
What, was to the dates for you, or you also?
He's got it on his phone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going by the fourth one.
Make the motion, except whatever dates Jim picks.
And not many are changing.
Right. The fact that you didn't hit holidays, except Memorial Day is good, that, that some years where it's ended up with three holidays. Bill Billyack, you have any comments?
Hello, gentlemen, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Now I'm just recovering from knee surgery, so I'm just chilling here.
Oh, new knee?
No, no, meniscus.
That's not horrible.
That's not horrible.
Because it's you, it's not us.
Alright, so we're looking at January twenty-second, February twenty-sixth, March twenty-fifth, April twenty-second, May twentieth, June twenty-fourth, July twenty-second, August twenty-sixth, September twenty-third, October twenty-eighth, November twenty-fifth, and December twenty-third. The twenty-third, we wanna move that one.
We make it Christmas Eve. I, I'd say put it in the way you have it, and if we have to change a meeting down the road, change on the fly.
Year to think about it.
Correct. That'll be just enough time.
Just.
No, that works to me, I like that, submit that, perfect, we have to change one, we'll change one, anything else?
So I have.
Need anything from us?
As of now, no, things are, things are going well. I'll get the land, I'll call the landscaper, get that figured out, and then, are you gonna handle the email to Carl?
I will, yeah, I'll, I'll email Carl, because he may have a question about the lights, and then I will turn off the lights at River Road. And I think I'll make it easier so that I can pre-program those time clocks calendar-wise to not. I can pre-program those time clocks calendar-wise to not work, and maybe I'll spend a few minutes down there doing that instead of turning things off. And the other thing I was just thinking about, oh, the water, yeah, definitely, and then if you get there and you're confused or not sure, call me.
Okay.
And basically pull the disconnect out so that the pump won't work, drain off the pump and turn on the heat tape. Then next year, we should see if they really did fix it.
See if it's leaking down there.
Yeah, I mean, it's always full of water, no matter what you do.
Yeah, you should, you have a towel, limited, it should be. Turbulence, if it's.
If it does, or.
Depends on how big your practice.
Yeah, I think what we did talk about was making sure it was actually fixed, pumping it out and filling it with sand. Have we talked about that? And I don't think that's a bad idea.
Problem is, if it breaks again, then you got a big old sand.
No one's fixed it in this many years, sand may help a little bit, because there's so much cold air blowing underneath that thing, there'll be less dead animals floating in it. That's gross. It's a big box of water, some animal, we pulled some animals out of there.
Maybe I'll take a look at it, maybe Thursday.
Alright.
See what's going.
A little come up, right? I think you made it, so it would come up. Alright, anything else?
No, I think I'm all set.
Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
And you get down there and you get confused about the water thing, just, just call me.
Yeah.
You know, if I'm around, I'll swing in.
Click out. We're done, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for joining us on Zoom. And I will see you guys soon.
Take care, guys. See you, Stu, see you, Billy.
Take care, boys.